Any objections? Okay. We did not have an executive session this evening, so that's going to bring us to our Open Public Media Act. Notice of this regular meeting of the Pittman Board of Education was posted at Furl Hall. A copy thereof delivered to all Pittman schools to be posted and posted on the district's website. Further notice was posted and filed as required by law, saying that the board would meet in closed session at 6:30 PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. The President shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the conduct of this meeting on the grounds that it violates the Open Public Media Act. Seeing none? Thank you for joining us at tonight's Board of Education meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stratus, please call the hall.
Yes, Mrs. Bolton.
Here.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mr. Grossman.
Present.
Mrs. Higbee Iono.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Papalardo.
Here.
Mrs. Pope.
Here.
Quote, uh, quorum seven zero.
She was here, Chris.
I got it.
Okay, that's going to bring us to our first public comment. The Pittman Public School District recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. This is the first of two public comments we will have tonight. The first public hearing is on agenda items only. This is a public comment, not a dialogue between the board and the public. You will have three minutes to speak. It is your opportunity to comment or ask questions on agenda items only. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. To be recognized to speak, please come stand to the podium located to my right. Okay, seeing none? We're, uh, actually, we're going to go, Mr. Destratus, do we have any correspondence?
No.
I will now move to accept a motion for the minutes of the Pittman Board of Education as held on the dates listed below, are approved, disprinted, and reading dispensed with. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Any objections?
Okay. We're actually going to swap the agenda out just a little bit tonight, and so we're going to do our presentation portion first. The President's report is kind of lengthy this evening, and I feel confident that none of these kiddos want to hear it. So, let's get to the stars of the show. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Colton Adams.
Sure, so Dr. Preston couldn't be with us tonight. He's, uh, currently has a family emergency he's dealing with, so I'm going to do my best to fill in for him. But for, for, to start the evening off, we have Mrs. Mason, who will present our staff and student spotlight for her school. So, Mrs. Mason. And Mr. Morris. I apologize.
Good evening. We're going to start off with our Panther Awards, which the board, I believe, started a couple of years ago. So, teachers had the opportunity to nominate students for character traits, so exhibiting integrity, what else did we have? Wisdom, I believe, was our first character virtue for this school year. On deck is justice. Right now, we're practicing self-control. So, the teachers had a chance to collaborate with their team, look at the students in the grade, and nominate ones that we really felt like stood out. So, I am going to share, I'm excited to share, the second, third, and fourth grade students that got nominated. And then, Mr. Morris, my co-principal, is going to share the fifth and sixth grade students who were nominated. So, students, when we call your names, come on up. We're going to get your picture. You're going to smile for your family, and we're going to get to brag about you a little bit, okay? All right, we're going to start with Colton Carey. I think Colton Carey, second grade. Colton is a kind, polite, hard-working student who takes pride in all he does in school and how he acts towards others. He shows compassion and empathy. He is always willing to help his friends, classmates, and teachers in any way possible. He knows right from wrong choices, and he will actively steer others in the right direction. Colton is a pleasure to teach, know, and have in our class. Congratulations, Colton. How do you go to sit back down? We'll get you for a picture later. All right, our third grade student that we are honoring is Cody McQuaid. All right, Cody and his brothers are all now, because she's adorable. And good and all right. We've got to get a picture of that. All right, Cody's our third grader. He is a fantastic student, shows excellence in all areas, especially wisdom and integrity. He is a model student that brings something special to our school every single day. Cody works hard, treats others with kindness, and always shows up ready to learn and help out. Whether it's taking on tough assignments, jumping into group activities, or cheering on his classmates, he makes a positive impact wherever he goes. His attitude, effort, and big heart truly stand out. We're so proud of everything he has accomplished, and we can't wait to see all of the great things he will continue to do. Congratulations, Cody. Good job. Our fourth grade student we would like to recognize, Tommy Shone. Tommy consistently demonstrates the character traits of wisdom and integrity, both academically and socially. He makes thoughtful choices, approaches challenges with maturity, and can always be counted on to do the right thing, even when no one is watching. Tommy leads by quiet example and contributes positively to our classroom community each day. Congratulations, Tommy.
I have them in my hand, and then I pocketed the glasses. And Nicolena Gray is our next. Nicolena is having an incredible school year. She has been doing phenomenally academically and really working hard socially as well. Nicolena is kind, respectful, hard-working young lady who has been having a very successful start to her fifth grade year. She is reflective, aware, and responsive in all that she does, and we are honored to have her on our team this year. She is a leader and role model in our class. Congratulations. Our next honoree is Emma Glass. I love the smile. Congratulations, girls. Is with great joy that we've recommended Emma Glass for the Integrity Panther Award. She is a shining example of what it means to do the right thing, even when she thinks no one is watching. Emma can always, always be counted on to tell the truth, help others, make, and make kind choices. In our classroom, she leads by example, treating everyone with respect, standing up for what's fair, and encouraging others to do their best. Emma shows that true character isn't about being perfect, but always about trying to do what's right. We are so proud of her and all the ways she makes our school a better place. Congratulations. Our last student tonight is Lucy Van Der Slice. Wisdom and integrity are complex character traits that are developed over time. They are values that show one's maturity and depth of character and work, that they are traits that only begin to capture the person that Lucy Van Der Slice is. Lucy is a student who not only has great intelligence, she is someone who has empathy, insight, reason, and good judgment. She is honest, reliable, trustworthy, and sincere. Lucy has a level of maturity that is very rarely seen in someone her age, yet she models it in all, in a way that is easy for her classmates and peers to emulate. Lucy is kind and approachable. She is well-liked and always ready with a smile and a helping hand. She is a hard worker in and outside the classroom, making her not only a model student, athlete, and musician, but also a model citizen. It seems so effortless to Lucy, which speaks volumes to her and her family's dedication to each other and in everything they set out to do. Lucy is a person that the sixth grade team is lucky to work with every day and is truly honored to know. Congratulations.
Congratulations, students. We have one more spotlight, not a student, but our staff spotlight for 2025. So, Mr. Morris and I are so excited to have Ms. Janine Morrison come on up. All right, here we go. It's always fun to brag about teachers. They're such a hard job, so we love highlighting them. Mrs. Morrison currently serves as the fifth grade Math, Science, and Social Studies teacher at PES. She serves about 50 students and families. She has been a dedicated teacher in the Pittman School District for 19 years. Fat, technique, is that right?
19 years? It's close, yeah.
Okay, it's close. Most of her teaching career was at Wals. Mr. Morris, I think you started before, Mr. Morris.
Yeah.
You did.
Starting as a kindergarten teacher. Some kindergartners here. Then a first grade teacher. Then I think COVID happens. And then she moved to fifth grade. She plays a critical role to the success of PES's daily operations. She was brave enough to relaunch the traditional fifth grade safety patrol in 2023 when we opened the new school. Each, each year, this club has grown, and currently we have about 40 safety patrol members. She has outlined a rigorous application process, followed by training sessions and assigning posts. The students help out in many areas, including morning announcements, flag duty, arrival dismissal duty. Each month, she appoints a captain, a lieutenant, a sergeant, and in addition to that, safeties of the month. She goes the extra step by proudly displaying their name and title on a safety bulletin board outside her classroom. Inside the classroom, you can find students highly engaged in learning, whether it be a collaborative lab task, practicing math facts to improve fluency. But beware, because if you walk in Mrs. Morrison's homeroom at any time, she will challenge you to trash football. If you get the basket, the students, I believe they get a reward, right? I think I'm like, two for two. Mrs. Morrison brings learning to life. She's positively impacted thousands of students in those 19 years, and we are grateful for her expertise, partnership, and commitment to all of the students and staff. And if I had a couple words to describe Janine, I would say firm, yet fair, kind, yet holding to high expectations. Those are words that we think about when we think about Mrs. Morrison. She truly believes each student can learn and holds them accountable for making that happen. Before we conclude, I did have some students write some fun things that they love about you, and we're going to start with something funny that you said. So, something funny that you say, and they all said it. All kids that I surveyed said, they love when you say, "Six, seven." They all said it.
I was, I was nervous.
You were nervous, okay. I think we're all over the six, seven.
Yeah.
Um, Mrs. Morrison, they also said, "Because of Mrs. Morrison, I know how to multiply decimals and just how to deal with decimals in general." Their favorite thing about you was that you're lighthearted and fashionable.
Oh, wow.
I got one more. Their favorite thing about you is that you give us a soft start in the morning to get ready for the day, and that you have a six, seven mindset, which I, again, did not know exactly what that meant, but I had to mention it. Thank you, Mrs. Morrison, for being a pillar in our school district for 19 years. It is our honor and privilege to recognize you as our 25, 26th staff spotlight. Congratulations.
We'll have all the students and our teacher come up to our, our pitman room here, and we'll get a nice photo.
Guys, we're going to go ahead and take a brief recess from our meeting so that we can take the students and staff pictures, and then if any other folks want to get a picture.
Now just the boring business stuff, so. Let me just get back in and we'll get started. Okay, guys. To our meeting. It's going to take us to our President's Report. I do have a number of items on the President's Report. Actually, you know what? Let me just close the doors real quick. Thank you. Oh, thanks. Not that I don't want muffled President's Report for those folks in whom who I'm sure would rather hear whatever's going on out in the hallway. It sounds more fun. Okay. We had, since our last meeting, we had, thank you so much, you guys. We had the NJ SBA workshop. I know that we were able to attend it. Anybody have any feedback or suggestions? Have you taken opportunity to do the survey for the NJ SBA? Your face is telling me no. I do know that they reviewed the survey results. I think there was a lot of very honest feedback. I know that I felt like the sessions were really spread out and difficult to get into. There was no way to ensure that you're, you could attend a session that you really wanted to. Some of the sessions were perhaps in smaller rooms than we would have liked or, you know, all that stuff. So unfortunately, I didn't really feel like I got to go to much this time, partly because I was presenting, but then also partly because of the structure. So would you guys agree? That's feedback I know that they're looking for. And I love sharing feedback, so. I want to take an opportunity to thank the board and everyone who helped assist in the pep rally. It was definitely a trial run and I loved seeing all of the kids that were able to make it out. And I liked that they were able to go out on the field. And hopefully, this is a tradition that on the years that our homecoming is not on Thanksgiving, we could see kind of carry forward. I'd love to see a 501(c) in town or another organization kind of take the lead. I think that it's just easier when you have those folks liaising with the district. It's not really a role that we can assume as board members, but I think any events that we can bring out as many community members as possible is great. So I want to thank all the organizations that participated and showed up and set up a table and did activities. That was really great. And I hope that the kids really enjoyed it. Saturday morning, Mrs. Higbee-Iona and I attended the County Leadership Association Meeting, which was virtual. There were a number of items. I kind of just co-mingled the talking points between the County Leadership Association and the Gloucester County Meeting because I thought there was so much overlap. And so I thought we would just kind of cover it all in one rather than speak to them individually. On Monday evening, we had the Gloucester County School Board Association Meeting at Washington Township. Dr. Severance presented. I know that some folks were able to log on from home. She talked a lot about educational leadership. She works primarily with educational facilities and schools. She's a former school superintendent as well. I thought there were some positive takeaways, but some of the items that were discussed was the policy tools that are going to be provided by the NJ SBA that would be available to boards that you could probably use in conjunction with Strauss ESME. It currently appears to be a resource that is at no additional charge. I would suspect that if it is actually intended to supplant Strauss ESME, there will at some point become a charge. I can't imagine that that resource will be available for free as that's a business model that already exists. But I will be interested to see what the NJ SBA rolls out. They also talked about Laura Bishop, the firm that we worked with for the referendum, is also now contracted with the NJ SBA. And they're providing crisis management in the event that a district ever needs that. And they have a guaranteed lowest rate in the agreement. Ray Penny is going to be leading some training sessions on civility. And I know that there's, I don't think it's a task force. I forget what the name is. It's not a standalone committee, but just increase conversation around that. But there are some classes coming up. I think it's a really important conversation. And I'm really pleased to hear that the NJ SBA is inserting that into the dialogue. Civility should always be, you know, how folks are conversing. So definitely in this space, it's what we strive for. So I'd love to see if we have opportunities as board members to participate in that. We can take advantage of it. They are now offering at the NJ SBA an in-house HR person, similar to how they have an in-house attorney and in-house BA. They are introducing an AI bot named Carla. Mrs. Higbee-Iona can tell you that some folks were very excited and could go on for quite a while about it.
I believe so.
It's, yeah, Carla seems amazing. The goal for Carla initially will be to require interaction if you do the self-paced governance classes. So she will not give you the answers, but she will require you to engage with the governance training in a way that demonstrates that you're paying attention. So swiping and sliding things down, answering questions, just making sure that you're making, you know, you're, you're doing your governance training in the spirit intended and in the way that we should. We had Harrison Silver and Jonathan Burns with Legislative Updates. They had a couple of updates. There's a couple charter school bills. I don't know that they really touched upon them, but that Senator Gopaul put forward in the Senate Education Committee on Thursday of last week. It dealt with, some of it dealt with the acceptance of charter school students. It summed up with the funding. There's several bills, but there's no sister bill in the Assembly yet. He also proposed a regionalization bill that was introduced to the Senate on Thursday. There is no Assembly Bill. They have no intention of voting on it. It would not impact a district like Pittman. The language of the bill seems to indicate, it, it seems kind of gray and kind of a wide, wide net currently that they're looking at. And it really was trying to give power to the executive county superintendent that they already have to evaluate shared service agreements and to encourage them. But we spoke with Mike Eliano, who is Senator Gopaul's aide, who indicated that they do not intend for a vote to be had. It's really just to start some of those dialogues around that. And that the hearings would be held during the regular Senate Education Committee meetings. So I will keep an eye on that, but I, you know, love driving to Trenton. So I think as those come up, there'll be some group trips if anybody wants to go. They also proposed pilot program legislation that would require municipalities to ensure that school districts have a fair shot at pilot agreements, payment loop taxes, so that that is shared amongst the different organizations that could be impacted by whatever that new development is or whatever the agreement currently reflects. So that's really kind of nuanced, definitely something to keep our eyes on. But they, seems like it's kind of still a little bit of a ways away to get into the, the end line on that. On Tuesday night, we had a fair funding collective meeting. And it was kind of all the same stuff you guys already heard. But one of the suggestions was creating a funding class that could be offered not only to, in partnership with the NJ SBA, but to New Jersey ASBO, New Jersey Admin Group. But the big suggestion was the League of Municipalities to partner with them. They felt like there was a gap in knowledge from municipalities about school funding. And it would be great if you could keep it really surface level and introduce them to some of the formatting of how schools are funded so that they could discern that information when the governor does their budget address and anticipate what the implication will be for school districts. So I know that was all very exciting. So the next question I had, delegate assembly, are we good for that? Are you able to go? All right. Is anyone else able to attend virtually? Those are some of the credits you need for the various certification levels. That's going to be this Saturday, right, Mr. Grossman? These are. It's Saturday, I think, at nine?
Yeah, I can probably do virtually, too.
Virtually, okay. Did you get a?
I drive up alone again.
Who do you want us all go with?
Yeah, right? Did you get?
The resolutions, yeah, there's only three. Do you want me to share them now?
Yeah, just like a, just a blurb if you have one. And then we can just have that conversation now instead of committing to going home.
There were originally five, but there's wording on like how one of them got kicked off the agenda. It's kind of long-winded and.
Yes, I did see that. The Resolutions Committee is its own committee, guys. If you're ever interested in serving on an NJ SBA committee, that I think it would be really nice to have someone on. But it isn't for me.
First one is Criminal History Review, Special Education Funding, and Universal Free School Meals.
Okay.
And then it looks like Bridgeton-Raritan District got two of them. One kicked off and one they're not, one they sent back, which will probably be revised before Saturday. And one they said they're not addressing.
All right, well, if you guys have any thoughts.
And I did quit to read more about them, but it was like reading more in peace. I'll go there and when I get the handbook, I get the synopsis.
Right.
I'll text everyone.
Okay. All right, so keep an eye out. And if you have anything that you want to weigh in on, please communicate it to Mr. Grossman. Stacy, I wanted to touch base and see if you, maybe next month we can get together. We asked inclusive feedback from everybody about what they're willing to do for committees. And then we wound up leaving them kind of all in place. So probably something to put on our radar to review those emails and see kind of what that might shake out like ahead of reorg. But I know that the holidays are stressful, so whatever comes up. And then I just want to put on everyone's radar that we had discussed using the reorg meeting as a board retreat. So we'll close the reorg meeting and then we'll go directly into our board retreat since we're already booked that evening. Is everyone still okay with that? Okay. Is that good? Mrs. Higbee-Iona, you'll do our ethics training for us. We like contracting the free services, Mrs. Higbee-Iona, to do them and get more detailed ethics training above and beyond. The state requires like a basic ethics statement that we sign and that we're required to adhere to. And then as a board, we try to do more nuanced training so that we have a better understanding as to the School Ethics Commission decisions and various ways that other districts have not adhered to it, basically, so that we can kind of learn from their lessons. So that is my very long-winded President's Report. And I'll now turn it over to Mr. Faltbiano.
All right, stepping in from Dr. Preston, I'm going to do his Superintendent's Report. So for the month, we had no HIBs either reported or confirmed. All security drills were completed at each school. On Thursday night last week, the junior, senior high had their open house. The open house welcomes students in grades five to eight along with any other students throughout the county or outside of the county that would be interested in attending Pittman. We had all our staff there. Mrs. Stewart did an excellent job setting that up, putting out flyers and notifying students in our community and outside of community that it was coming. We had our academies on full display, all of our clubs. We had students on hand. All of our teachers were there, even our board had a table. So thank you, Board, for coming out. So that went really well and Mrs. Stewart and her team did a really nice job. Other, other things happening in Pittman, we have some recent student achievements. Both the boys and girls soccer team made the playoffs. So congratulations to those teams. Our girls tennis team, for the second year in a row, were the South Jersey State Champions. So congratulations to them. We had five students make All-South Jersey Chorus. That's James Sullivan, Scott Powell, Felix Canaus, Ella Pedalinghug, and Fiona James. Fiona was also named Section Leader, which is a really big deal. And Mrs. Mickel made a little joke. She said, you know, Fiona came up to me and said, I'm going to get Section Leader. And Sarah was like, I don't know. It's not, not, you know, it's hard to get that. And what do you know, she was named Section Leader and Mrs. Mickels threw the roof over that. And congratulations to Fiona. She's done a great job singing for our district for the past few years. So at least as long as I've been here. Our theater program puts on, we'll put on a play on Thursday and Friday night. Thanksgiving is coming and it'll be the 100th meeting between Clayton and Pittman in their annual football game. And it's becoming a big celebration. On Tuesday night, there's going to be a celebration dinner for all previous players and coaches that's taking place. So the districts are putting that on together, which is nice. Finally, myself, Dr. Preston couldn't make it, was supposed to be there. And Mrs. Mason and Ms. Stewart presented at the Senior Outreach Luncheon at the Methodist Church on Monday. And that was pretty much a thank you for coming out, voting for the referendum, either for or against, is how I put it. And we also had an opportunity to have a question and answer session, which was pretty active. And I got grilled a little bit, which I liked. And then we also played a video of our open house that Mrs. Stewart and Mrs. Tucci put together. And they just absolutely loved that. They loved seeing the video, seeing the kids. I had so many of them come up to me afterwards and just talk about how nice it was to see the things happening in the district. So also shout, shout out to Eileen Salmon, who does a really nice job coordinating with Dr. Preston. And I talked to Eileen about possibly connecting more with the seniors and doing more with that outreach group. So hopefully more to come on that. And I think that completes Dr. Preston's report.
Yeah, I thought the open house was really great. It was such a nice opportunity to attend. You over, the board had a table, only in that we like directed people around the corner. That was our, that was our, and honestly, Mr. Grossman did all the heavy lifting on that. I think I mostly just stood at the table and handed out keychains. We were very good at making the turn around the corner. That's what we excelled at. I will turn it over to.
Wait, do we know or does?
We neglected to mention two of our cross-country athletes made states.
Correct, yes.
Blackman and Peyton Coyle.
Correct, yes, I apologize. We did have that as well. Thank you, Mrs. Higbee.
And do we know with the all-time record on the Thanksgiving game, what the record is? When Ross' record?
I do not know what the record is. I'm pretty sure Pittman has the edge.
It's going to be my mission. That's what I'll do this weekend, is that, my laundry. That, finding the time gap. Gave up on that.
In the years that I provided to the group that's putting it together, we won all of those years.
Yeah, selective research is nice, too. I like that. You're right, maybe I'll do selective research this weekend. I like it. All right, I will turn it over to our student representatives.
At the high school, the junior, senior high school, Spirit Week started with Dress Up Day and Homecoming on October 17th. It was PJ Day, too. And then we went to Monochromatic, Monochromatic Monday on, obviously, that Monday. And then Tuesday was Jersey versus Jersey Shore, then Duo Day, Country versus Country Club, and then Black and Orange. Students enjoyed our Spirit Week activities, including Powderpuff, Dress Up Days, Hallway Decorating, Quizzle, the Homecoming Dance, Pep Rally, and the Homecoming Game. We had a lot of supporters at the Homecoming Game this year, including students and parents. We also had a decent amount of students, mostly the little ones come out for the community-wide pep rally as well, despite it's freezing outside. On another note, our goal for the food drive this year was 1,200 cans, but we almost doubled it with over 2,000 cans this year. It was a very fun month for the students. The following week, students celebrated a Red Ribbon Week to emphasize the negative consequences of drug use. During that week, students participated in Dress Up Days and teachers decorated their doors to where, to raise awareness for the cause. Fall sports are coming to an end with only the last football game at Clayton on Thanksgiving Day remaining. The end of the marking period was last week and students met with their teachers. They finalized their grades for the marking period. Winter sports are also starting this week for some people, including swim, allowing students to participate in basketball, winter track, swim, dive, and wrestling very shortly. Lastly, National Honor Society inductions are on December 5th.
Okay, at the elementary school, fourth graders are enjoying Rowan's Engineers on Wheels, which they visit and they focus on steam experiments and activities. The elementary school hosted their annual Halloween parade on Davis Field. It was a huge success. The newest after-school clubs have begun, which include a game club and cursive club. And also, Ms. Rhodey is planning the stages of a new cooking club. The fifth graders are organizing a Thanksgiving Day food drive and will be donating to the Food Bank of New South Jersey. The Women's Club of Pittman is hosting the Third Annual Spelling B, which started this month. Parents have the opportunity to meet with teachers later in the month to discuss their students' progress at parent-teacher conferences, which I'm pretty sure was this week. The students are still enjoying the Character Champions Program in which they earn tickets to be eligible for weekly prizes. As Ms. Mason had said earlier, safety patrol is underway and students are helping around the school with morning announcements, arrival, dismissal, flight duty, and much more. And their Home and School Association is hosting a Grinch Night for the second and third graders in December. As far, as far as Memorial, they hosted their first literacy night sponsored by their Early Childhood Council. It was open to preschool through first grade. The Women's Club readers visited a first-grade classroom in October and they're working on Book Buddies. So the first graders get to listen and they also get to read. They'll be hosting them again next month. And students had a blast on Halloween. They had two parades, one for preschool and one for kindergarten and first grade. In the upcoming month, teachers are looking forward to conferencing with parents and hosting the annual HSA-sponsored holiday shop.
I do have a selfish question. Now, who won Spirit Week?
Juniors.
I was going to say, and who won Homecoming King and Queen?
Yes, Abby was Homecoming Queen.
Miss Abby was being modest.
I still have your buttons in my car.
Oh, that's nice.
They're definitely in my dashboard. The way I clean my van, they could be there by the time, like, your kids are here.
I should have, I should have put one in the time capsule.
You should have.
Oh, you should have.
Should have.
Love to take it back up. All right, we're going to go on to Finance and Facility, and I will turn it over to our chairman, Mr. Grossman.
Good evening all. The Finance and Facilities Committee met at 3:30 PM on November 12th. In attendance, along with myself, were Superintendent Dr. Robert Preston, Business Administrator Christopher Destratus, Board President April Miller, and my colleague, the incomparable Rebecca Higbee-Iona. The meeting lasted one hour, five minutes, and we adjourned at 4:35 PM. We discussed this month's agenda items in great detail, and I will highlight the bullet points. There is a business academy grant that the board must vote to accept this evening. We did so last year and must do so again this year. We made a bookkeeping adjustment to account in one spot maintenance expenses for the district that will now include the salaries for that department to be reflective of the entire maintenance budget totals. Whereas in past, the salaries were listed elsewhere and now they are all on the same line item. The new logo for the newly constructed track and field arena was still undecided. We do, however, agree that the standalone P logo is not what will be chosen. We were between the tall print with the Pittman overlay and the Panther profile with the, with Pittman written below it. After discussion by admins and the various stakeholders, the decision was made to use the image of the Panther. We discussed and agreed to award a stipend for a girls' assistant wrestling coach. Logic, common sense, and prospective student appeal for the sport makes this decision to have a second assistant coach for the female wrestlers. We agreed to set maintenance reserve funds at $600,000 in each account. And a detailed discussion on out-of-district tuition was had. With a great exchange of pros and cons and budgetary matters and concerns, but after a long dialogue, we did not land on out-of-district tuition rates for next year as of yet. More to follow after more data is collected on the matter. This will conclude this month's report, and with that, I move items one through four for approval.
You have a second?
Second, Bolton.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seen none. Mr. Destratus, please pull the vote.
Mrs. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell? Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Mrs. Higbee-Iona?
Yes.
Mrs. Papalardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Poet?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, Curriculum and Instruction, I will turn it over to Chairman Bolton, yes?
Ah, yes, ma'am.
Yep, great. That's what I thought, that's what I had here in front of me, but I had, like a pause for a second, I'm like, am I doing this right?
I was looking at my little spiel. Okay, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on November 12th, 2025, at 4:35 in our newly renovated school board office. It was nice to meet in person this month in a nice office, so. It lasted about an hour, in attendance were Dr. Preston, Mr. Caltbiano, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Pope, and myself. We went over many items on the agenda, we went over the enrollment numbers, a teacher shifting over to PES to cover several special education students, and our volunteer coaches for the winter season at the high school. We also discussed the wall school building and the options we have for tenants. We also talked about some programs that we may run out of there before we sign a lease agreement, we just want to make sure we have everything in order. We then moved to talk about the ASVAB test is now, one will meet a requirement for high school graduation for students, so we're happy about that because that should help some students meet some requirements a little easier to get them through graduation. And last, we talked about some of the new court cases. One deals with reading material in the classroom as well as religious exemptions in the curriculum area. So we'll continue to keep an eye on these areas and if we need to change any policy, we will then pass that over to the Policy Committee if we feel, you know, if we get any, we talked about with the Strauss Esme and different things, if we get any legal advice that we need to change some of our policy, we'll, the curriculum will then pass it over to the Policy Committee so that they can make those changes through our policy. So with that, I will make a motion to approve items two through 26 as written.
May I have a second?
No.
Second, please. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Destratus, please call the votes.
Mrs. Bolton?
I'm going to say yes, but I think I have to abstain from 21.
Okay. Mrs. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Mrs. Higby Iona?
I have to abstain from 20, but yes to the rest.
Okay, Mrs. Papalardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
I abstain for number two, yes to the rest.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, Communication Policy Committee, I'll turn it over to our Chairman, Mrs. Higby Iona.
The Communication Policy Committee met on November 12th at 4:30 PM. In attendance were Mrs. Papalardo, Mrs. Farrell, Dr. Preston, Mr. Caltbiano, and me. We only have one action item this month, which is the second reading of the revised policy on governing booster clubs. Strauss Esme has issued a proposed policy addressing the New Jersey Freedom to Read Act. We need to review it and we'll have a revised policy, if necessary, on the agenda, probably next month for a first reading. So with that, I will move to adopt item number one as written.
May I have a second?
Second. Sounds like we were at 4:30.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Destratus, please call the votes.
Mrs. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
Mrs. Higby Iona?
Yes.
Mrs. Papalardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, that's going to bring us to our second public comment. The Pittman Public School District recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves in school matters of community interest. This is the second public comment and it is not a dialogue between the board and the public. You will have three minutes to speak and it is your opportunity to comment or ask questions. In accordance with Board Policy Number 0167, we ask that you state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. To be recognized to speak, please come stand to the podium located to my right and speak clearly for the folks at home.
My name is Samantha Calibres, I live in Pittman now for almost nine years, I've got three boys. My youngest, though, whose name is Marshall, is autistic, he's on the spectrum with autism, with any parent, has a child who has special needs, that is a very broad spectrum. So my son has a big issue unfortunately when it comes to behavioral. Pittman School, we attended last year Memorial, it was good in terms of, I did love the aides in terms of him, that you guys give speech and OT, but only having an hour of that during certain days of the week is not enough for what my son and truly what I think some of the other children needed in there. And unfortunately, you guys don't offer ABA, which is for behavioral strictly, like my son is adapting well, he's doing well with his speech, he's doing well in terms of, he's starting to recognize people better, but there are a lot of kids who have autism, they're very routine ritual and unfortunately, at least what we experienced last year in Memorial where aides were intertwining throughout the day, the only constant was their teacher. I'm not saying that things don't happen, but it's very important for kids with autism to have that matter of routine every day. So moving forward to September, we, well, really I should go back to when we had our meeting back, our IEP meeting, which was great overall, but we had brought up our concerns, my husband and I, who unfortunately is not here, he's deployed overseas at the moment, so I have my advocates with me, but we brought up about not having ABA, we were told that they hired an aide who had ABA training, but at the end of the day, training is pretty expensive and unless they have like a one-on-one aide with ABA, that doesn't really do great for kids like mine, unfortunately. So with that said, when September came around, we started at an outside school and unless anybody here who has had a child with special needs, sorry, it's a little upsetting, get a little upset, it's expensive, it's an expensive choice we have to make to better for our kids and we're going right now to a school called Country Acres, which is on the cusp of Glassboro and Williamstown, that provides full-day aid with ABA, speech, and OT, which is what kids like my son needs. And I love Pittman, clearly a lot of people who are here love Pittman, that's why you're on the school board and you want better for our kids, but Pittman lacks special needs help, like, and it was upsetting to hear that even this year in September, the teacher who was previously my son's teacher wasn't there, so the kids who are still there this year were also going to face another change. So I'm glad that my son personally didn't have to deal with that, but I think that's something as a whole, a community, like you guys really have to take into account for the kids and if you don't have a child who has special needs or a family member, I feel you can't quite relate, but trying to get from me, somebody, it's, it's very hard to change their routine, it's upsetting for them, they don't understand why, and I'm just here to make light of that, like that you guys can further see and I'm just trying to see and if we can perk out to get some help because it's draining our savings trying to send him out of district because we didn't have a choice, you guys don't offer the programming that he needs. So that's why we're here and if you have anything else to say as advocate, I unfortunately know my three minutes is up, but I appreciate your time and I did email back on the 21st and I appreciate you, Mrs. Miller, just acknowledging my email and I did hear back on the 31st from Mr. Morris about meeting, making a meeting to talk about all of this and I've never heard an answer back. I responded back and I can pull the emails, print them, give them whoever, but I have not heard back about setting up a sit-down meeting when I have emailed back and asked, so that's kind of where I'm at for me. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Harry Rodriguez, I live in LaGuardia, too, in the neighborhood. And in discussion with Mrs. Calibres, she also had written every one of you on the school board regarding the issues with your son. Now, we understand that it is an expense, but if this child needs special training and instruction, I can't understand why the school will not grant that.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to participate in public comment? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any old business? Any new business? Okay, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So...
Papalardo, may I have a second?
Second, Bolton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any objections? Next Board of Education's meeting will be held on Wednesday, December 17th, in the Pittman Junior Senior High Media Center.